Welcome to the March 3rd, 2022 Parma City School District Board of Education Work Session. Please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice.
Roll call, Mrs. Musio.
Mrs. Bratz, Mrs. Purpose.
Yes.
Mr. Price, Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Yes, sorry, I voted for my presence here.
Okay, unless there is an objection, we will dispense with the reading of the special meeting notice. Objections? Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm the public portion of this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the public portion of this meeting, and if there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical team can maybe address.
We will.
And just a reminder, committee members are welcome to attend the Board of Education Work Sessions, however, there is not an opportunity to participate. And for that, we are ready to move on.
Sure.
Floor is yours, sir.
Well, as we've done for the first two meetings, we've given the Board a preview of our upcoming foundation or building our future meetings. So this gives you an opportunity to see the content, and certainly if you want to make any suggestions, ask questions, obviously, we want the Board to be ahead of the community and be ahead of the committee. So really appreciate you coming in at four o'clock today to be able to do these things. We will start with our district goals, left below here. My apologies. Pursue achievement and increase transparency through our community. So love, Mrs. Bratz. And practice fiscal responsibility. Obviously, we've talked about all three of these things throughout. Today's presentation has a little bit less in terms of what the buildings could look like and why there's benefits to fewer is better. We go through that a little bit again, but we feel like we've done most of the teaching that we wanted to accomplish, most of the informing in the first two meetings. So today's more about how people are reacting to various contexts. Just as a reminder, we started out early in January, one of the educate committee members to develop a consensus facilities plan. We talked much about how we could all go and craft a plan, but that's not what we want to do. We want to have some type of community backing behind what we're doing, so it's not just Cindy Bratz Plan, or the Mark Ruda Plan, or the Steve Vaughn Plan, or the Charlie Smiley Plan. It's actually an informed committee plan, and so that's been our goal. We want to build future schools to provide more opportunities, not less, more. How can we use our size to our advantage? And finally, and we'll talk a lot about this today, or at least specifically about it, how can we design a plan that inspires three communities? Now, the process that had been outlined is the following, but you know that we changed that somewhat. We received an email from our friend, Mr. Prendezal, the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, said, hey, Charles, hope it's not a problem if we move the deadline up to the end of March for you. Well, Mr. Prendezal, since you stand to give us $140 million, it won't be a problem, sir. And so you know that we pulled together a much more ambitious set of meetings because we need to know what we want to submit to the state by March 31st, if we had been operating within April 22nd deadline. Next week, you see, we have our Building Our Future Committee meetings, same process, Tuesdays at four, Wednesdays at seven, Thursdays at one. Thank you so much for agreeing to come in on March 17th. I understand that that St. Patrick's Day will be as short as possible, but that's really when we want to try to hash out what our final recommendation is. That would then lead to individual meetings, where we'll sit and talk on my couch and make sure that folks are comfortable with what we hope is a consensus recommendation from the Board. If necessary, if we still need to hash things out and go through things, then that, we're able to do that March 23rd. If not, we will cancel that meeting, and then March 31st, which is regularly scheduled Board meeting. It's go time, we'll be ready to submit a recommendation to the state. Just as a reminder, some gibbons, ballot in November of 2022, which is what we're looking at. No renovation, we continue to get questions about that, but we continue to hold to the fact that we do not want to paint and patch, we want to rebuild. The OCC share again is now at 37% for approximately $140 million of our entire project, and our current model is not fiscally responsible nor sustainable. Remember that we set a benchmark of a 50% reduction, that was from the senior leadership team, who've shown you numbers that support that type of dramatic action. And finally, we cannot say, our kids can't handle this. Our kids can handle it, and we're going to make sure that they can through intelligent design, intelligent construction, and certainly the committed staff and leaders that we have in our district. So, here's the fun part. What do the people think? Let me get this in front of me, too. First piece we're going to look at is the community. Community, we asked a series of questions, but ultimately, the question that matters the most that we're going to look at now are what do they really think of the different plans? Now, understand first, community had really not a whole lot more to go on than the monitor. We tried to put as much information into the monitor as possible, so in terms of really an informed opinion, the communities would be a little bit less, lower so on the spectrum. But, you know, hopefully, folks are watching, hopefully, folks took at least the time to read what we said in the monitor before they cast their vote. So, we won't go through all of the different percentages, but you see, 3K through 12s actually had a higher negative reaction than it did positive. Folks strongly disagreed with that at a 33% rate, and we only had a 22% that actually strongly really wanted that, rated at a five. One campus per grade band model, and even more discrepancy between those numbers, 31% really didn't like that, and 21% really liked it. The 4-1-1, I want to point out, was the only model that actually had a positive response. In other words, number five, or we really like that, was actually higher than number one. They still had 22% that really didn't like it, but again, that was the only model of the four to the community where they really said, yep, let's go for this, and that was a 30%, 29.8. 6-2, I was slightly surprised at the negative reaction to this.
Turn the slide.
Is there more slide?
Turn the slide.
6-2, I was slightly surprised at this because we did have approximately 23,000 people vote yes in November of 2020, but when you really looked at this response, at least, again, the negatives far away, in fact, two times as many negatives as positives. 282 negatives at a one, really dislike, and only 146 really liked. So, again, just recapping, in terms of community response, the only positive, the only place where you see a higher positive reaction than the negative is the 4-1-1. We also surveyed our staff. 130 staff members responded. 3K through 12s clearly see are skewed toward the negative responses. 1-1-1, which is again, one campus per grade band model, even more so skewed toward the left there. Looking at 4-1-1, you do see the positive, although a little bit outpaced by the 6-2. So, different from the community, certainly. Our staff was more positive about that 6-2, or the model that we advanced last time. We didn't really ask why questions, and this was really more of a, you know, rate these things. You could speculate that potentially there was some familiarity with the plan, because that was what we advanced last spring, or at least last school year. But again, 4-1-1 comes out as a positive response as well. The final group of folks that we surveyed was our parents, 540 responses, 33% preferred the 6-2. So again, 6-2, very negative from the community, but from our parents and from our staff, very positive. You also see a pretty positive response there for our four elementaries, one middle, one high, with 31% that really came in second place. So it's pretty clear that really the 6-2 and the 4-1-1 should really advance in our thinking as potentials. We also asked for suggestions, and we said, you know, go ahead and give us any suggestions that you feel could be palatable within our seven campus benchmark. And we took these from the committee that we've been working with, we also took them from the staff surveys. 3-2-2 and 4-2-1 were suggestions that really came out, and 38 people, 35 people isn't all that significant, but it was significant enough because these were legitimately write-ins, and they also came from the committee that we've been working with, that we thought we should consider those as well. So when we look at all four, these were what we thought, and again, ultimately, we understand our role here. Our role is to recommend to you, Board, so please understand if there's others that you want to see, or you have others that you want us to consider, we can certainly continue to do that, but these were the four that we, based on the data, that we really thought we should move ahead with. So 4-1-1 would be elementaries with about 1,000, middle school at about 1,800, high school at about 3,000. When you look at all in, it's about a 7.44 mil. Now, that's a projection, so please understand that this can go through some interest rate calculation that we've tried to be really conservative on. Conservative meaning we've gone with a higher than we really think, because we'd rather say it's going to be 7.44 than come down off of that if necessary. This does include the one mil deduction from a COPS proposal that we talked about last week with Mr. Manilov. So we're really trying to stay below that eight mil threshold. Demolition is a $14 million endeavor regardless of what we do, so that's an important consideration as well. Grade bands, for the most part, and we'll talk about this, on these, because this is how the OCC did the prices, on these, the grade bands are K to 5, 6 to 8, 9 to 12. And we'll show you how we flipped in a few minutes, and we'll talk about why we did that. But again, all of those went into these current cost projections. The 6-2 model, which again, we thought we should advance based on the fact that it really was the most popular amongst both our staff and our parents, was a 7.98 mil issue, $450 million. At a sort of simple math, really, to say, the more buildings you're going to build, that village is going to creep up a little bit. So when you look at six elementaries as compared to the lower numbers, the fours and the threes, you're going to see a little bit higher village. But again, all within the same ballpark. And just take a step back, the reason is, you look at number of students. Number of students equals a square footage, square footage equals a price, and that's what they give you. So as much as, you know, there's some discrepancy in the models, when you're looking at the same student population, you're not going to see a whole lot of variation regardless of what model is. 3-2-2 came in at 7.64 mils, that was the elementary at approximately 1,300, middle school at 880, high school, two high schools at 1,900, and I gave you the price breakdowns for those as well. And then the 4-2-1, $439 million with a 7.77. The only piece I did not touch on for this was the various LFIs. We did not put pools in the middle schools. We did put pools in any campus that had a high school. Couple pieces there, we think that's a community asset. We also think that, you know, we don't, we've talked about more opportunities for kids, we don't want to have a swimming team now and not in new construction, so that feels like we should, it would be appropriate to continue to have pools in our high schools. The other piece is that auditoriums would go in the middle schools, they would also go into high schools. They would not go into elementaries. An auditorium, just for, you know, your purposes, is $3.5 million, a pool is $5 million, so that's where you get those numbers from. Go ahead, we could, yeah, I mean, there's more of us.
I just, I got this question a couple times from people that were watching on Facebook, and I just saw it, if you, on this slide, can you explain, I understand why, but so everybody watching understands, why does the high school enrollment say 3,000, but when you bring it to two high school enrollments, it's 1,900? So it shows kind of that you're missing some up top there? Can you explain, so everybody, I know why, but can you explain it so everybody watching knows?
Yeah, it's just about how you count career tech students. You're going to have to have enough high school students for 3,000, kids are going to have to be there. The reality is that you're not going to have 3,000 students on campus at once, for the most part, if you can have about 400-ish at a career tech site, which, again, we can sort of projectively on that campus. We probably should have been consistent in how we labeled it, but ultimately, you need enough space to put 3,000 students.
And then in the 6-2 and the 3-2-2, is there going to be career tech at only one?
Both of them.
Both of them? So it would be split somewhere?
Yes. Yeah, I got the question a couple times, too. We should have been consistent about how we counted career tech, we're slightly confused. So these are, and again, these are projections. Please understand that we put things on paper, not because we're trying to mandate or dictate to our Board of Education, but because we have to have a place to start, and we try to make as intelligent of a recommendation as possible. If we were 3-2-2, we actually flipped, so in the 3-2-2 and the 4-2-1, we actually flipped the grade levels a little bit, because we did not think it made sense to move from a very large elementary to a smaller middle school. We thought that there should be a progression upward. So if you put a 3K to 4, instead of a 3K to 5, you actually will have more students in the middle school than you would at the elementary school, which again, seemed to be a natural progression for us. If you didn't do it that way, your elementary would actually end up being larger than the middle, which is relatively counterintuitive to how most of us think about education, and quite frankly, our experience is that our Parma families and our Parma communities are relatively traditional in their thinking, so we wanted to be, you know, consistent with that. The 3-2-2, we thought Pleasant Valley, John Muir, and Hillside, we'll show you these on the map in a few minutes. The middles, we thought it's Greenbrier and Parma Senior. The high, we thought it was Normandy and Valley Forge. 4-2-1, Hillside, Parma Park, Greenbrier, and John Muir. The middles are Normandy and Valley Forge, the high, middle cities, Parma Senior. The 6-2-2, and Parma Parks on there is an interesting piece, and I'll mention that as we go through the next couple of sites. That's sort of a swing piece. I'll mention it when we get to the next piece, but right now, the projection would be Pleasant Valley, John Muir, Hillside, Parma Park, Redwood, Ridge Brook. Your secondary campuses similar to what we talked about last time, Normandy and Valley Forge. 4-1-1, Hillside, John Muir, Greenbrier, Pleasant Valley. Middle is Valley Forge and Hillside, I'm sorry, high is Parma Senior. So all of these two, I mean, Dr. Schneider would love to get up here and go through the parking and traffic patterns at each of them, but that's not necessarily the focus of these meetings, but they line up very well. They're all, the 6-2, obviously, you know, you're going to have campuses that are smaller, and so you're going to have to be a little bit more creative, but you're also talking about less traffic if you still have six elementaries. So we're very excited to be able to do a lot of improvements in terms of traffic patterns that we've looked at at the different presentations that Dr. Schneider did. This part is where I want to mention Parma Park and why, you know, Parma Park ends up being sort of a swing in a couple of the models. We know that it's really important not to gut any of the tax revenue from any of our three communities, and we base this on the current model, obviously, how many kids attend. We base it on kids because obviously, staff outs kids, right? So, you know, the staff might shift a little bit, but you're always going to staff, you know, one teacher for every 25 students, three principals for 750 students, et cetera. So right now, we've got 7158 in Parma, 1647 in Parma Heights, only 563 in Seven Hills, and I want to point out that in all four of those models, Seven Hills gained this. They gained in income tax revenue, which I think is an important consideration. We will not gut any of our, any of our communities. One of the questions was, how do we inspire three communities to get behind this? So part of it is having, you know, physical footprints within each of the three boundaries. Where Parma Park becomes a swing is in the 6-2 model. Parma Park would not be the best answer there in terms of where you would put that sixth elementary school. Greenbrier would actually be a better answer, and Greenbrier would actually balance out the income taxes, and we'll look at that in a second in the 6-2. But, you know, is there sort of a psychological piece to Parma Heights having their own elementary? So I mean, that's, that's sort of what we need to weigh. We kept it there on this projection, we kept Parma Park in Parma Heights, but when you look at income tax wise, you could say, look at that 6-2, Parma Heights went from a 1647 as your income tax base, you had staff aligning to students, all the way to 3,023, and Parma takes more of a hit there. Parma itself goes from 7158 students all the way down to 4959. So, again, we show this to say, we've considered all of them. You know, Parma Heights, you see a little bit of fall off if we went 3-2-2, but for the most part, it's relatively similar. 6-2 is something we would have to think more about, with Parma Park versus Greenbrier being kind of a decision we would have to make. Seven Hills, again, more than, more than benefits, at least from an income tax revenue standpoint in each of these places. To help you visualize, we plotted these, so if this was 4-1-1, what we envisioned was following, we tried to kind of hit the four corners of the cities with the elementaries. Middle, we kept at Valley Forge, tough argument there, you could say it should be at Normandy. Quite frankly, again, trying to be cognizant of the tax base of Parma Heights. Mayor Gallup has been pretty consistent in saying she's supportive of the concept, she needs to be at least close to hold in terms of income tax revenue, and that's obviously very fair. We are the largest income tax revenue source for Parma Heights, so we can't forget that. We have to be cognizant of that, we need her support, certainly. Parma Heights has been a very supportive community in the past of our school issues, and so being very honest and saying that a big part of why Valley Forge gets that middle school is because it's located in Parma Heights. And then the high would be at Parma Senior High. 3-2-2, tried to make sort of a triangle with the elementaries, Pleasant Valley, John Muir, and Hillside. Middles, Greenbrier, and Parma Senior, and then the highs are Normandy and Valley Forge. So again, trying to triangle with the three, and then the twos, try to balance it out with the east-west split. We, again, like the east-west split quite a bit, we talked quite a bit about this in the last issues. We do not want to split north-south, so that's important to us. It's going to be relatively possible to do that with elementary, we don't want to, you know, drive folks from one corner of the city to another. So you will have some discrepancy in socioeconomic status if we're at a 3-2, we understand that, it'll be the same if it's four. Regardless, when you're trying to keep elementary within as much of a neighborhood feel as possible, you're going to have some discrepancy in status. This was the 6-2, again, this shows the elementary, right now at least, in Parma Park, Sinasterix down there, because I think, again, it's just something we would have to weigh, you know, does the psychological effect of having, A, ends up with a really big tax increase, tax base increase in Parma Heights, and B, I'm not, again, anybody would argue that Parma Park itself is a better site than Greenbrier. Again, does Parma Heights, are they more likely to support saying, oh, we have, you know, we're from Parma Park, it's our own elementary? Secondaries are split across town, Normandy and Valley Forge, as we discussed, and then again, you can see the elementaries split as much as possible throughout our neighborhoods.
It is, Parma Park, though, is not the only, if you live in Parma Heights, Parma Park is not your only school, though.
Correct. Pleasant Valley picks up a lot of Parma Heights.
Redwood, I mean, they all pick them up. So that, just so everybody else knows, like, I think everybody knows where I live, like, my kids are slated to Pleasant Valley, or if we were like three streets over, we'd be Redwood. So you pick up that whole kind of center of Rablik and Ackley and all of that goes that way, so as you're visualizing and thinking of where those kids are coming from.
Then finally, the 4-2-1, Hillside, Parma Park, Greenbrier, and John Muir, the four elementaries.
It didn't flip.
Because I'm looking at mine, because I need to see. But I should be looking at that one. So again, I mean, you see, you see us trying to, trying to split things out and trying to minimize busing as much as possible, try to be consistent throughout the city. Any of these folks, you know, we can move these Es and these Ms and these Hs around if we would like. We try to be very strategic about how we did it, keeping in mind distances and keeping in mind the cities in all three, trying to keep them as whole as possible. Mrs. Strapp is going to remind us again about advantages of curriculum and instruction in each of these. Dr. Schneider is going to remind us of advantages from an operations standpoint. I'll finish by reminding us of where the process goes from here, but this was a lot of information pretty quickly, and we have it in front of you as well. Do you want to ask questions at this point? I'm happy to pause or hear what you want to see next week, I mean, again, this is sort of a dry run for next week, well.
Can you email this to us?
Yes.
It's hard to, those graphs and where people landed from there to here, it was really hard to see.
No problem. Do you want me to do that now, and then you can kind of look at it as we flip?
No, I think I'm going with the computer, so that's.
No, I have my life, that's fine.
Did we do a 4-2-2? Did we do a what?
A 4-2-2.
We did not.
Yeah, 4-2 also.
We did not. That was not so.
Well, 4-2 is a middle-high, two middle-high campuses, like it was last time, and 4-2-2 would be four elementaries, two middles, two high schools.
Right. So we had 4-2, did get a few, again, what we're just suggesting were the, I see four that kind of pulled up highest, and we can look at different things. My concern, and just speaking honestly, and again, realizing I'm outranked in the room, but my concern with the 4-2 is this. A, I would think that three of us, and I can say this confidently, really believe one high school is the best route out for, that that's a strong feeling from our city leaders, too. B, that is very similar to the last plan, but we took away two elementaries. So elementaries tend to be the one that, you know, that's the pot, they want more elementaries. So I guess that's our concern, but we can look at it, and Mrs. Bratz asked a question before, can you get a price on 4-2? It was right in the middle, and I don't know if you have the.
Yeah, I do have the.
I was just looking at the map that we had laid out, how it would fit better in the cities, where you'd have an elementary in each of the corners better, and then two junior highs, and then you go to two high schools. But it doesn't have to be two high schools, I was just asking if we just kind of looked at it.
Would moving the Parma Park to Pleasant Valley, kind of that one.
Well, that's the problem that is.
To Greenbrier, where it would go.
But is, would Valley Forge, or was being used, and that one, so they're not pushing tax base?
4-2 was projected as 7.53 mils, so right, right in the middle. The only one, again, the only, the only one that sort of sticks out as an outlier when you're talking about price is that 6-2, and again, it's sort of intuitive, you're building eight buildings at that point, so it is going to tick up a little bit.
Right.
But again, I mean, if the Board feels no, 4-2 is really a viable, I mean, we could piece that together, it's just the data wasn't really showing us 4-2 as a, as a strong one.
Can you share that real quick? Is the, share this real quick in case something, as Mrs. Strapp quote comes up or whatever, so it's easier to read, please.
Yep.
That's on me, I did not bring my glasses, and I'm like, I'm looking at this, like, I don't know if I can read it. And is fiscally conservative or responsible as it is to put three of these on here? It's like trying to read Barbie. Yeah, trying to read Barbie books.
I'll just share it with you, it's called Building Our Future Meeting 3.
Thank you.
We can, we can start with Mrs. Strapp, then, and again, we're here for as long as we want to be. Happy to answer any questions and go through any of this data that you would like to see. Mrs. Strapp.
I see what you're saying. I just, when you flashed it, I go, oh, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, because you can move it south more, and Parma Heights would still have the tax base.
So I just have the one slide, and Dr. Schneider has one slide, and it's really just to recap what we've said the last few meetings. And so when we talk about fewer is better, we're looking at fewer campuses, and all of our plans create that equity for STEM and our KLA, which were our gems. More consistency in instruction, which I talked about, the larger collaborative teams and spaces for our educators and support staff. We offer College Credit Plus, AP, and a huge course offering for elective courses at the middle and high school. It would just be a better possibility of being able to offer those courses that maybe aren't as popular when we have three high schools. Lastly, it's a clear theater program when we're talking fewer campuses at the secondary level, going from fewer at the elementary to the secondary for our arts, our PE, and our music program. And my favorite slide, the lab lab, I do believe all of our students need to have those STEM experiences, so I wanted to remind you of what we have as a gem at Pleasant Valley Elementary, and I believe that we should have that at every single elementary, and also labs that are STEM-like for our middle and our high school. And that's all I have.
Last bullet, last bullet.
Oh.
Least likely.
Yes, least likely to realize these benefits at the 6-2. So these things can happen, however.
They're diluted.
Yes. So you still have that pizza, and you still have that orange juice, that's a little bit watered down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Similarly, for operations, just kind of reminders of the things that we have talked about in the course of the last several meetings, and really trying to be responsive to the questions and concerns that came from the various stakeholders and sharing some data in regard to, you know, what they would look like in various models. So. So of course, fewer is better has been the core value that we have continued to come back to, and there are some things that are available to us as opportunities with any of the models that are still on the table. And Dr. Smiley could talk about that in terms of traffic patterns that are significantly better than what we have right now. The school within a school concept or atmosphere, where students are not traversing the entire building every day to get to the places where they need to be. Improved stadium security measures from vestibules to rings and pods that are locked down, STEM labs and learning labs, so on and so on. Having the support for students directly where the students are at, as opposed to significantly distance from where they're located. So again, those, those go for all of the models that are out there. So in terms of trying to distinguish the advantages of what's still on the table, fewer campuses creates specifically opportunities with the four-one-one model that are stronger than they are at the others. So in terms of operations and all the different considerations that we've discussed over the course of the meetings, the four-one-one model is the strongest in terms of being able to provide things that I'll go through briefly. The four-two-one model is a close second. The six-two model would be the one that would provide these to the lowest, the least degree. So what does that mean in terms of the four-one-one and the most efficient models? More efficiency in all areas of staffing, so teachers, more staff, administration. And just a quick note, because it was something that had come up in more than several of the survey responses, some people had shared that they didn't want to see class sizes increased, and that it felt as though if we had large campuses and large buildings, class sizes would be bigger. Wasn't quite sure of why, if they were picturing big lectures, you know, stuff, classrooms. There was somewhat consistent amongst various stakeholders. So that is not what we're talking about. We're talking about class sizes that are the same, or smaller than what we have had historically. Currently, for this school year, our class sizes are lower than they usually would be because of the ESTRA funds, we talked about that. But fewer campuses, especially four-one-one, that's efficiencies that allow us to staff at the same or lower student ratio than what we have. Economies are scalable. Our size becomes an asset. For the first time in our history, our size becomes a reason why we can do things better as opposed to a reason why we struggle to get things done that we need to do and that students and families deserve. And that goes for literally pretty much anything that you could think of, from plowing snow to cutting grass to HVAC systems and maintenance to cleaning, and so on and so on and so on. Very, very long list. Four-one-one is the strongest in that regard. The ability to offer extracurricular opportunities that we currently cannot support, art, music, and sports. And it's similar in concept to what Mrs. Strapp had shared several times, in that we have some niche classes or some elective courses that we may have four or eight students at one building that want to have it, and four or six or eight on another building, and we can't run. And we had that same issue with clubs and opportunities and sports teams, where if we were to combine, and a fewer is better, but we can also more than we currently do. And of course, four-one-one gives us the best opportunity. Okay?
Thank you. Just a few more points, and then again, we'll take any questions. The process from here, as I outlined, you have the ability to shape anything you want to in those meetings, so please don't be shy. I know it's a lot of information today. Certainly, we have a gap between now and Tuesday. There are still some survey results trickling in, so we will go through those. Again, the seventeenth is really when we would take the input from the last set of committee meetings, and so that you know, if you think of a funnel, we're really almost at the bottom of that funnel now. That drip comes out, here's March seventeenth. Whatever the product through the funnel is, our seventeenth, we're ready for that. We'll talk on the eighteenth individually, see how people are, and the hope is we have consensus. Not sure that we will, but the hope is that. If not, we come back the twenty-third. And then finally, the thirty-first is really the drop dead date of when we have to, have to have everything ready for the state. Now, this would not be Building Our Future Meeting without some type of visual representation or some type of concept. So today, and those of you who attended the State of the City will sort of pick up on this as well, or the State of the Schools, I should say. We want to make sure that when we get through this plan, we can do better than this for our kids. Because right now, this symbolizes school improvement in the Parma City schools. We replace these with just white ones. We painted Normandy this summer. Maria Midmark students walked into brand-new environments, brand-new cafeterias, and brand-new labs, and brand-new technology. Our answer, right here, we painted Normandy. So the pressure couldn't be higher for us to make a decision that should minimize the need for us to invest in spackle, ceiling tiles. Because right now, and Mr. Ruda Sala, this firsthand of Valley Forge today, even these, we have a hard time keeping in stock. Places in our school district where even these are just gone, because they've been replaced the same one thirty-four times. We owe it to our kids, we owe it to our community to be better than that. And so our work in the next four weeks is critical to that endeavor. So with that, any, any questions, anything you want to see? We can work different models. Again, we don't have to decide anything today. This is more just showing you guys what we're going to go through with the committee, but again, being open to the boards, sort of, hey, what about this, or what about this?
So my husband and I were at dinner last night, and we stopped at Bleacher's to have a drink before we went home, and we met a couple there. And they are new to Parma City schools, the middle of last year. They moved here from Lakewood. And she said to me, my son came home on the second day of school at Valley Forge and said, Mom, you know how in the basement, when our ceiling tiles got water on them, we replaced them? I have a classroom that has teddy bears duct taped to mine, because they can't keep the spots from coming back. And she said, I didn't know what to say to him other than, welcome to Parma. And it hit me like a thousand knives. That is not the welcome to Parma that I want our kids to have. She is also the parent that volunteered to, like, go take, give tours to the things in the schools that are, that are lacking.
We will gladly take her up on that when that time comes.
I'm, I'm just getting all the info.
Yeah, it was a lot. And then, again, please...
The only, the only question I have was that four-two-two, but you pointed it out, and I, I think that wouldn't work quite what I was thinking. I was just thinking, you know, if you had a four-two-two, then you'd have, like, two elementaries feeding into one junior high, four element, two elementaries feeding into a junior high, then they feed into two high schools, or one high school, four-two-one.
We have, yeah, that's that one right there.
Yeah, we have four-two-one, it's just not, I just don't like where the one E is, I guess. It doesn't look like it's, looks like there's two pretty close together and then really far apart.
We, and that, that's, that northern more E could move to Ridgebrook. Right now, it's a Greenbrier. You'd have a D a little more north.
Like, see, the other E come more south.
Yeah.
Right.
It was a valley.
Yeah. Yeah. I do have a question. On the survey results, was one, which one was good, which one was bad? Like, was one least...
What are we talking about?
Yeah. Least attractive to most attractive, is that, how that scale goes?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
So, and we actually had to sort of flip them. In the, the monitor went out where one was best and five was worst. But when, so what we did was, we actually hand-entered all the ones, the people who, and it was about a hundred-and-twenty, and then we made it more, and I'll update it over the weekend. But we were very careful to reverse those. Because in the, in the online version, it was, one is absolutely not, five is yes, please do this.
And that's what we're looking at, is one is absolutely not.
Correct.
Five is yes, please do this.
Yeah, I'm sorry, so they have to get it back.
No, that's okay. We just wanted to...
So then three is basically neutral.
Yeah.
One and two are negatives, and so what's the, what's the total on the four-fives and the one-twos? You know, because I can't see the numbers.
They're not, they're not really differences.
Yeah, I'd have to add them.
I cannot tell any of those numbers.
Considering on the, sixty...
So the three-two on the first one...
The four-one-one's pretty good. That was like thirty and forty-two, so seventy-two.
Like sixty percent positives to it?
All right, so the...
Is that the percentages?
Four-one-one from the community, two-hundred-and-four say no, two-hundred-and-seventy-six say yes. For the six-two, two-hundred-and-eighty-two say no, one-hundred-and-forty-six say yes. So that's that, that's the biggest disparity you see, is the community says no to the old plan, and then the, uh... The staff says, the staff says, oh, twenty say no to four-one-one, forty-two say yes. Twenty-two say no to six-two, thirty-nine say yes. And I can't find the parent one, there's another one in here somewhere.
The heroin was just a stray, which of, which of, which of these do you think would be less?
Oh, yeah.
And so that was actually pretty close, too. You're thirty-four percent above the six-two, thirty-one percent above the four, four-one-one. I, I kind of wanted, because I really don't want hard feelings or people to not feel hurt, so, I mean, there's four board members here, and two of them asked about middle schools and having either a four-two-two or a four-two model. I mean, do you want us to look at a four-two or a four-two-two?
You know, I, I can't find the numbers, or maybe I can't see them either. The difference between the six-two and the four-two.
On the price?
Yeah. Because I, that's the reason I asked about looking at the four-two, because I thought losing two elementaries would cut down the buildings, and that should be a significant change.
Six-two was seven-nine-eight, and four-two was...
Seven-five-three.
Seven-five-three.
Okay.
Make it bigger.
All right, six-nine, you could go six-nine-eight to seven-five-three.
And then that other one was eight-six-seven-five-three-oh-nine?
Are you going to belt out the song there?
Squeeze that in.
I do like...
I didn't catch it. I'm slow sometimes.
In my opinion, I'm only going to speak for me, but the six-two, in my mind, is off the table based on Tiffany and Carl saying that's the least likely option to get those benefits for our kids. It's also the highest millage that we would be asking for, but the millage is kind of negligible in terms of, we're, we're all right in that wheelhouse. But if those things are, if you're scaling those, I, in my mind, that's, we can knock the six-two off at least if they say that that's not, we're not going to do what's best for kids. That's the farthest thing from doing what our ultimate goal is. I do like the four-two-two. I would like to see that. I think you're right about the four-two, maybe? I don't know, maybe?
So what we could do, again, we said the four, the board's the ultimate.
That's it, that's four-two.
Well, I like the four, I mean, the four-two-two even, to see those.
No, I know, I'm just saying.
The four-two-two takes us to eight millage, too, though, so we're going to see higher millage. I mean, I, I'd rather kind of plot out the four-two period.
That's, and I wonder if that's part of, you had said the, how the, the people didn't like that? Maybe it's because they still felt it was too many elementary buildings.
Well, and again, I don't want to, that wasn't an explicit choice, so...
Right.
The only thing we, we ended up looking at were the two write-ins. So like, four-two did get twelve people that suggested it, it's just the reason that we kind of plotted out the other one, because they were so much higher.
Right.
So maybe, hate to discount the community, I mean, personally, three-two-two for me is a stretch, because your elementaries, you wouldn't have those natural, you know, linear progression models.
You have kids split out of the school.
Yeah.
That's why I thought the four-two-two would be better.
Yeah, I like that.
I was thinking when I saw the three-two-two. But as I center and think about it, I think the four-two-one might be the most viable.
I like that because you still have, when you look at sports, too, with the four-two, you have kids that get to go to their two middle schools, and they get to explore what it is they want to do in a less competitive environment. That's just the academic piece before they funnel into, right, and they get some experience and you get some trials.
Honestly, even thinking like four, do we have a four-one-one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, there's a...
That was, that was one where like, I'm like, I've got like so many numbers in my head right now, so I was like, how about a one-one, with this one giant...
That was on there, too.
That, that got killed. That got killed.
What, what got killed?
One-one-one-one.
The seventeen-story building?
Yes.
Well, we know that's your idea.
Actually, one-one-one went down in two different forms. One was, you know, three K to twelves, which is kind of one-one-one. And then the other was one K to four, one-five to eight, one-nine to twelve, and both of them were...
Okay, I was just...
Can you bring back up the math for four-two-one?
That makes sense.
So now, in four-two-one, with eighth graders at the middle school, everything but the blue gets bussed, right?
Correct.
And unless you're within the radius. The, the reason that Parma Park stays there is because that middle school alone, if there's two middle schools, it's going to be smaller than Valley Forge.
So where could you move that northern E to?
Ridgebrook or Hannah.
You can't put, uh, Parma Park, say that again, about why Parma Park couldn't go to the Pleasant Valley side.
They would then not stay whole on income tax in Parma Heights.
Oh, because it'd be smaller than that.
Because if you go to middle, if you, and that's why we can move Parma, we can move Parma Park, if we're doing just a middle school, just one middle school, we don't need Parma Park anymore, because now that one middle school is bigger than Valley Forge is right now, so we're good there. You know, chuck that Parma Heights box off, but we can't do it in this, because the middle school's not large enough.
What I heard, that Parma Park was initially built to be a junior high, and it was never used for that purpose. I have a connection at the Historical Museum that has mentioned that.
Do you like my new board? That is all about the history, history of PCSD, our new board out there? It's all the history of us.
Okay, great.
Do you want us to, for next week? I mean, want us to scrap the three-two-two, look at four-two? The, the only issue, again, is that, that was the highest writing, so I...
I would rather scrap the six-two and look at four-two.
Six-two is the highest in our parents and our staff.
But our experts in education and operations are saying that that is the least likely. I, I know, I'm saying to the parents, I guess, I'm saying is that you hired, or you voted us to do that, and that's the least likely scenario. And I think if we had a chance to sit down, each one of those parents, one-on-one, and explain it, they would value that same educational piece and the operational piece, which ultimately leads to better opportunities for kids. So that's my, I'd rather scrap six-two and see a four-two replacement, just to have a better...
So are, are each of you comfortable with not moving six-two ahead?
If, if we consider the four-two.
That's what I mean, we'll go for two. Okay.
I, I guess I just think, I just think, when it was a question for me, it was because it would be fewer buildings. And that was a cost issue. That's why I was interested in it in particular.
So we'll look at three-two-two, four-two, four-two-one, four-one-one, would be our four of violence.
Okay, say those again.
And we'll make sure we take those videos, talk about the six-two off the... Now, kid, we will keep those there in...
Where did the three-two-two come from?
Write-ins, community survey.
That's really surprising to me.
Do we have the four-two on here?
That there'd be a bunch that wouldn't want only three elementaries, you know?
I was very surprised, too. Three-two-two came out of nowhere to me.
I would think that they, because in their head, I mean, this is just speculation, elementary in Parma Heights, elementary in Parma, elementary in Seven Hills, that's where they came from that, and then two middle schools and two high schools. But I don't see how that's, you can't, I don't see how that's feasible, though. But I don't see how that's, you can't, I don't see how that's feasible though. For the tax base and all that, to keep it, just, it seems like you're messing. Either rewarding one community and punishing another, where some of the other ones seem to e- even out better across the three. And if you start putting too much, too many, too much people into Seven Hills or Parma Heights, you're taking away from Parma. And eighty thousand people in Parma.
Four two.
Relying on that tax money.
I would say that, that Parma knew when we talked about six two, that they were gonna lose a little bit on the tax. They, they, we were aboard with that, they understood and they were still positive. But yeah, I mean, there's a difference between losing a little bit and losing a, I mean, this takes you, one of them, the six two was all the way from seventy one fifty eight, I mean, you're losing twenty one hundred kids, twenty two hundred kids, and the amount of teachers, that's, that's a good chunk.
So, going back to all the things we talked about, like educational opportunities for kids and stuff like that, would, I'd be interested to see the, the, I guess, on the, that, if you had four two and you had the middle school, high schools together, we capture all that awesomeness that we talked about, memberships, moving up, taking classes, that kind of thing. If we have four two one, we lose that, but what else do we, but we gained some of those, like the CTE in the same building. So I guess I'd be interested to see what touches more kids, what one of those variations, strictly in terms of educational opportunities, because in my mind, that's kind of where I'm at, four two one or four two, like that's. No, that's okay, I just, as we were talking, I'm thinking about all the awesome things you told us and like how we could, I do, and what Steve said about the linear kind of feeding into the things, I like that, and I like, you know, I guess that's my biggest question now, is kind of which way can we maximize opportunities for how many students we're touching? You know, I don't know how many CTE kids we have total, but if you have more seventh and eighth graders that are gonna benefit here than your others, you know what I mean, I think that would be one of the things I'd like to.
Yeah, the, the only piece I would say is it's, it, it'll be hard to quantify, because quite frankly, if you do the advantages of the campus concept, or the mentoring, or the, you know, advanced courses, a little bit harder to quantify the mentoring piece, advanced courses we probably could. But boy, you would really cut down on your high school opportunities, you still have, I've got a career, a college credit plus teacher here for these three courses, but not here. I, you know, we, we will do absolutely the best we can, I, I'm, I'm going to speculate that our answer's gonna come out, the one is better, because it's, it's universal then, like, e- everything is universal. There is no, some high school kids are gonna lose out on this and not have an opportunity for this, it's, it's all right there.
Can you put the green band, uh, slide it up?
This one?
No.
This one?
The one that, yeah, has the great bands, the enrollment. So it's, uh, four two one is four K four building, then five eight, then nine twelve.
That, that's also, that's an option, right, I mean, that's.
No, I got one, I was just one of the breakdown ones.
Yeah, but it, it does.
Does that change the philosophy, the middle school versus the junior high philosophy at all?
Totally.
And then the CTE would be at that one building?
And then you went at the bus for vocational students. When you, when you did the, you added into the cost of busing, because it would increase by doing this? Did you look at any of the locations like this? Because you may have that, that radius around it, so depending on where they were, how many students would need to be bused to, and we go that in-depth into it?
We did with the six two model, because there was some with them in the day a few years ago. We did some of that also for the four one one, the simulation was thrown out of these meetings, but.
So you did use Valley Forge as the middle school in the four one one, when you calculated, okay, alright. Because it's just being, you know, when you look at it on a map, being so over, it looks like you're gonna be busing way more. But it just depends on where people are, where they actually reside.
Yeah, it's pretty far to the corner.
Right. Which is, which is fine, I mean, that's what it is, it's what it is, as long as.
I'm gonna push just a little bit. Any chance we could move past that three two two, do we at all see a three two two as being the?
I could let go of the three two two.
You could too.
I don't, I don't like it.
I don't like the triangle, I think it's gonna create too much inequity.
Thank you.
It's a lot harder to feed.
Four two one, four one one, four two.
Yeah.
Okay?
You'd always have a school split, you know?
Yeah.
And I think that would grate on some folks.
Yeah, because you're gonna have some.
It's a better flow if we keep it even.
You might have some elementary school kids that end up going to different middle schools, and then, you know, say, split up with their friends, and then those middle schools might split up into, so they might lose friends again, and the more consistent you can keep things, the easier it is.
No, that's great.
And I went to school in the days when that happened, you know, where they split you and, because they were building new buildings at that time, not because of the consolidation, but because of building, and it was just, of course, people weren't as inclined to be as excited about that then as they are now, but, um, it, there was a lot of that going on, and that was tough, you know, it was hard for folks to, uh, leave their community of friends or whatever, and have that jostling back and forth.
I, I mean, I honestly appreciate that consideration, um, it really does move us forward, it gives us a clear focus for next week. And quite frankly, I think we've done pretty amazing work in two months now, that it's three very formidable finalists that are very different from what we asked for last time, so I think, I think we.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
And I don't know if there's any way to make it plausible. What about if you were one?
You, you, I was thinking the sort of the same thing.
Because you could get all of those, you, educationally, you would capture so many more.
But you're gonna cut Parma Heights' tax base drastically by doing that.
Yeah.
Because I was doing the same thing, like thinking, what if, what if the middle school was more centrally located closer to the high school, even if it wasn't attached? So that, you know, for the busing off, but then you're killing Parma Heights, and no, you can't do that.
You'd be taking a good shell cut at Parma Heights.
Yeah.
I, I kept looking at the numbers, you go from seventeen hundred students to nine hundred, that's, that's a lot of staff that you'd be cutting out.
Yeah, that's about half.
And there's not really room to put too big.
You could, you could potentially lose Parma Heights at that point.
Yeah. I like the concept of having.
Yeah, that's.
It is what I was thinking.
Yeah.
And even if you were with two middle schools or elementaries on the west side, you're, you know, to, to do that, they'd be too close together on the side of.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be way too close, yeah.
Right.
One mega.
Yeah, then you, yeah, at that point, you're at three, three one one.
Yeah.
But that third one is larger than the other two.
I don't know how that would.
I mean, it would be feasible for tax reasons, but I don't know how to.
The other piece, and, and just to be transparent, I mean, these are obviously conversations that are evolving quickly. Do we want to at least test the waters in the committee on phasing versus all-in? The one piece about phasing is if we looked at elementary first, I mean, your millage is gonna be around three, three and a half. Then when you looked at your secondary, when money came through, you're looking at four and a half, five, but you're subtracting about three, because you got the state money. The concern that, and again, just speaking aloud, I'm not an expert and I haven't pulled this, but concern is eventually you run into levy fatigue and folks keep seeing the Parma senior schools and Parma City schools, and eventually, I don't care if it's two mills or three mills, it's still no. So you weigh the benefit of a much lower bond in November of two thousand twenty-two versus the negative of you're doing the same thing you told us last time, which was you're tying our hands in a vote and you ask twice.
I was just gonna say, I think, I think that the average voter is going to understand very quickly that I either pay it all now, or I pay it in two go rounds just by having a very simple elevator pitch conversation about the plan. I don't think that that is going to sway a big enough bubble of voters because we've had lower millage like that shut down for other things, because it was a tax increase. So in my mind, I think there's more to be gained, educationally and financially, with one swoop versus splitting it.
It's awful risky to think that they're gonna do two in a few years' time. That's scary, um, to think that we'd be able to pass that. And then you've also got the, the issue of how you divide up those schools to feed into three and three, and if you go the elementary route first, um, and it's, that's tough to, to see how that would all work out well. Especially if we didn't pass again.
And the, the history of the displacement of the elementary kids.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, I think that that might come back and bite us.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't take the conversation off the table for the people if they wanted to have it. I, I wouldn't tell them, no, we won't discuss that with you. But if, you know, nobody discusses it, nobody really cares, then obviously, you know, but I wouldn't take the option away from them.
Oh, well, yeah.
Just to be transparent too, they are, we have a, we, no, it's not, we can advertise to our walkers to hopefully come and hear some of the concepts we've been talking about. Folks have been using our hallways, so that starts a faculty team, so they're heading up there. I, I don't need to be there at faculty team, so please continue.
Um, no, yeah, I have another question, and I kinda lost it. Alright, I'm gonna get back to it, um. As, as I'm thinking about this possibility, you know, of, of doing that, of breaking it up, I'm, uh, I don't know if doing, uh, I, I guess I don't think either way would do it. Should I, I'm looking at doing the secondary first, and then, but then that's higher.
Correct.
A lot higher money.
Correct.
And, um, if you do the elementaries, you know, it's lo- lesser money, but I think the, the feeding problem gets to be, you know, and the moving on gets to be pretty complicated, and then we don't reap any of the other benefits of making for smaller or fewer middle and high schools, and I think we need to do that.
I also think one swoop gives us the opportunity, if we wanted to investigate changing things, changing the footprint during construction, I think that gives us a much better.
How about changing footprint during construction?
Leading up to construction, if we wanted to do anything towards that end, I think one swoop gives you a much better opportunity to do that.
But that also, changing what we're.
What they're voting on, right.
That'd be changing what they voted on then.
Yeah, if the people voted on.
Changing the existing, so if we're looking at consolidating before construction, they, they wouldn't be changing on what before voted.
I thought she was saying changing the, the, what we, what the bond, what we were doing during construction.
Say, say if we wanted to consolidate, sorry, consolidating, yeah, no, no, no. Say if we wanted to consolidate leading up to this, to capture other kinds of savings, or to be able to raise a lot and prepare it to build one high, whatever the case may be. One swoop gives us a bu- a much better opportunity to work towards that end than trying to divvy it up, redraw the lines, and then you're gonna be moving kids. You know, if we're gonna move them, let's move them once, let's move them to a line to what, you know, this new plan, not do, split it in half, move them here, and then move them again, and then if it fails, the second bond issue failed, you had to change the other, like, that would just be a lot.
There's probably no way to find this out, but I wonder, like, say if the consensus was four one one, and of the people that are going to vote no on it, is it because of how much it costs or because it's four one one?
Yeah, that would be the reason.
Yeah, why, yeah.
Let's do that on a little box, that's reason number five.
Because. Because that, that would really tell you that your, your plan is wrong, or it's just, they just can't afford it without.
It is, it is difficult.
Right.
And, and just so the board, the whole board knows it's all, this is Carvis, but if you remember, we had a, um, a survey effort planned, a professional polling effort, and the state auditor had looked at these polls as being more involved with levies than they should be, so they are now mixing that. In fact, there's a, we have a treasurer and a superintendent in Southern Ohio that are currently charged with misuse of public funds.
For polling.
So we, really, polling is, unless.
As I said, I wish.
Yeah, I mean, Pi can't afford to, to.
I said, I wish we would not have found that out.
Because that is interesting, and that's always gonna be the, the challenge, apart from it isn't just, it's a tax increase, it's somebody's losing something.
Right.
Right.
So, you know, yeah, it's a little, and that's, that's why we tried to go through this process, what's the best, you know, what can hopefully get the most.
Well, we have those meetings next week, right?
Right.
Can we ask that question to those people?
Yeah.
If you're opposed to each plan or what, which one is it?
Absolutely.
I think we should, at least, I mean, I know it's not, you know, forty thousand people, but it's, just get a little temperature on what they're thinking.
So we're gonna only look at, for next week, four two one, four two, and four one one?
Correct.
Okay, anything else?
I know I'm gonna have like fifteen thousand questions once I leave the door.
Yeah.
Four two one and four one one?
No, four two one, four two, four one one.
Those are the three that are still under consideration.
Four one one, four two one, and four two.
I think narrowing that down, we're, we're in a very general ballpark right now, that's much, we're no longer in the state of Ohio, we're, we're now all at East and Parma right now.
Yeah, and, and you conceptualized it well before, what do we wanna prioritize? You know, two campuses, and potentially for mentoring, and you still have your, your feel of, we're a large enough district at ninety-three hundred kids to maintain two high schools? Or is it one, and we're all in on that campus, and, and so that's, it's an interesting conversation. I, I would say, and again, thank you to the board, because both, I think, are significant progress.
Yes.
Well, I think whatever plan comes about now, especially that we've narrowed it to these three that appear to be the ones that, uh, we would move forward with most likely, they will all benefit kids in terms of, um, educational progress. We'll do better in any of these plans, and we'll do better financially in any of these plans than where we are right now. So whatever happens, we're gonna be moving forward significantly.
Very well said.
In the district.
We can.
I think there's.
Sorry, I think.
That's all right. I think, um, a large part for me is a consideration of, um, I'm gonna look at these kind of equally, and, well, you know, you know, people have some different thoughts and feelings on, you know, which one they would prefer. I'm gonna try to look at them pretty equally and think about what's good for all three of our cities, you know? And more than anything else, what do I think the residents of these three cities could get behind more than anything else? You know, what would move them, um, to support this? Because I think they're all gonna be a significant improvement in our educational product in the district and our financial situation in the district.
You know, I, I appreciate that sentiment a lot, I, I might speak to it a little bit more bluntly. If I had made tally marks since I started. If I had made tally marks since I started between the folks who said you can never close Normandy and the folks who said you got to have one high school, it'd probably even, I wish there was something that could help us have a consensus behind that because I think that, that's sort of the question we're kind of diving at right here. And, you know, four two, obviously it's Normandy and Valley Forge. We're not, we've talked quite a bit about not doing the Parma Senior High and then one of the others, at least in my mind.
I have two, two questions. One, in any of these, where does the board office, the preschool and ACEs go?
So with four, um, you know, let me, let me pause a minute.
Okay. If we could have, if we could have that too as the board, that way we know what we're looking at. My last question is, and I don't know if this is even possible. You know how, I mean, I'm looking at you, Sean, because I'm hoping you'll know the answer. You know how when you vote for a board member and there's three seats up and you vote no more than three and you pick that? Can we do that? Like, okay, so.
Put all, put all those things out there at once.
Right, could you put all three of these, like, could it be ballot box that had four two one, four two and four one one?
I think you probably could, but it'd be very confusing for voters.
But then they could pick one, so then.
Because one of two will pass and one fails.
But you would pick the one with the most, you'd pick the one with the most votes? Like it would be all in one box, you couldn't do that?
You're the four against the box.
I was just thinking how like Mark, Steve and I were all in the same columns.
You got to have a plan, whatever, you put the three different plans up, I guess, but.
And then one or three could pass.
Right, no, I was thinking this would be the best out of, you know what I mean?
The one that gets the most votes.
Right.
Their taxes went up sixteen mills.
Woo! Where was that?
If we voted two.
If all three would pass, it'd be twenty.
I mean, one. I guess the question, if there was language that was just, and I wouldn't say all three, I think, I would say the board would have to come back down to, yeah, iconic question, one high school, don't close Normandy. And if you, if you got that down to the two and those were the two and it was just passage of one, I mean, what are the odds that, what are the odds that they would be identical votes that would be here?
Yeah. I like how you phrased it, that kind of question, because this would be a generational question.
It is, it is. It is, and it's, it resounds across all three communities with every person that you meet has an opinion on it one way or another. No one really is ambivalent about that question.
I mean, just in the last three weeks, right? I mean, I've had breakfast with two different community elders who have very passionate, informed, well-staked out positions on, on both of those questions. One was you can never close Normandy, the other one was you're not going to pass anything until it's a one high school plan.
I think we've come a long way in understanding the basis of their veracity towards those though. I think we've come a long way in understanding how people are getting to one of those two sides of the aisle. And I think that that is just going to be the next step is what side are we going to land on? And how are we going to bring those folks around that roadblock with us?
A lot of the don't close Normandy is, you know, for so many years they were trying to close. Talking about saying that Normandy needs to close. And the people that, yeah, because this is a day, a day that opened, that the people that live around there and that's their kid's school and all that, look at it as though you're just taking away their school, so don't close that school. Whereas if you went to one, then you're kind of like, we're not choosing one community over the other, we're going with one thing for the Parma City School District that everybody can use, at least.
That's an interesting, interesting perspective. Yeah, very good.
Anything else, anybody?
But I really, I just want to underscore, I really appreciate the ability to whittle things down that helps us in terms of preparing for next week. We will have the data that you asked for in terms of where the different pieces go. But if anything else, certainly know I'm accessible and we'll be ready to go Tuesday night.
It'll be, so wait a minute though. So we, the whittle down, will this be like last time you guys changed it up and then you'll just send it to us before it goes to the public one?
Yeah.
Okay. So before, Tuesday before the public sees it, we'll see the new version of this?
We will, and then, you know, again, realize we're not doing anything until we come back together again on the seventeen. To go through everything.
I just meant before the public would see, you know, no six two, no three two two. Like we'll see that first, right?
They will, but this was also public, so.
Well, but, yeah, but I meant we worked through, like, when he shows up on Tuesday to do the VOF meeting.
That'll be different.
Right, well, we have gotten that.
We've got that.
Right, that was just my question.
Your new, uh.
Presentation with.
Sure.
That was what I was trying to say about.
Can you give me the numbers for the millage for four two one and four one one?
Yeah.
We don't have a, we do have a four two one. We don't have a four two.
Charlie had figured it for me. It's five seven five.
Oh, say, it was right in the middle, that's right, you said.
And what is the four two one?
Four two one is seven point seven seven.
Should have seen Sean's face when he said Charlie had figured it for me. It's with the, it's plus or minus four mills. It's within four mills.
Well, I think, I think the thing is, for that amount, they're equal.
They really, I mean, nobody's voting yes or no on seven four four, even to seven nine eight. I mean, you're, even half a mill is.
I have one more question, maybe even to whittle it down the tiniest bit more. Does any, do any, does anyone on the board have a strong opposition to one middle school versus two middle schools? Because that's the difference between four two one and four one one.
An opposition to it?
Yeah, or a strong opinion either way, I guess.
I, I, I think we should still flesh it out because that's very, no, two middle schools versus two secondary campuses is very different.
Okay.
I, I think that's different enough to continue to explore.
Okay.
Yeah, um, there's, there's no laws that have to be two, you know, taking the four one one and going to four two one.
I just meant to break down from three plans to two plans.
Right, I see what you're, I see what you're saying, but I think.
Leaving it there to look at the different options, no, that's fine.
We're already down to three, I mean, this is.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks for your presentation.
You know, it's, it's been a fun process to get back at this. I mean, honestly, you said iconic, I said generational, I mean, these, these puzzle pieces have been around for a long time.
So we'll look forward to your presentations next week, on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. So, everybody good? So I am. I moved to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero three dash seven two to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Yeah, motion and second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero three dash seven two. Roll call, Mr. Nusiel.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Rudolph.
Yes.